Order, please. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Put my glasses on. Got too young. Okay, here are announcements. There are basically two types of meetings. We're heavy into the budget meeting this month, and obviously there's going to be one more regular meeting, and here are the dates. First of all, the town hall offices will be closed on Monday, January 15th, for the observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Budget meetings will occur on Thursday, January 18th at 6:00 p.m. here in this room, Monday, January 22nd, 6:00 p.m. in this room, and on Monday, January 29th, 6:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room. The next regular town council meeting occurs on Thursday, January 25th, at 7:00 p.m., again, here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Before I turn over to you, Eileen, I just want to make a quick statement. Oh, you don't have anything. Oh, you don't have anything, announcements. Okay, well, just in terms, I'm not sure where I should say this, so I'll say it here. I think I just want to publicly acknowledge the recent publicity that we have had regarding our Police Department and Chief Roy's presentation to the council during a budget meeting on Monday about her need, or the community's need for a task, I shouldn't say task force, the reassignment of a sergeant and patrolman to work on a, let's see, I don't want to call it a drug team, but it's a special investigation. Thank you. So, that has been instituted, in fact, it was instituted even before, but it got the blessing of this council on Monday evening. And really, the only statement I want to make is to, one, acknowledge and thank Chief Roy and the Police Department for bringing it to our attention early and quickly. And I also want to acknowledge and give credit to this town council, who jumped on it to provide that support, and to be able to acknowledge to the community that we're not immune, every single town will have it, but we're going to make it as inconvenient and as inhospitable as we can to be able to minimize the impact on our community. But at the same time, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. We're still a good town. And that's what we're doing. We're jumping on it, both feet, to maintain it that way. And any community help that you can provide with crime line, watch, or drop a dime, however you want to do it, to help as a community, let's all chip in and keep this community as safe as it has been. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and, okay. Oh, and also, Chief Roy will be coming back to the town council on the 25th to update us regarding this situation as well. Okay, I also have a POF, no, I'll say POF A O A update. You gentlemen, go ahead. Bill?
Yeah, just a reminder that the Citizens Task Force, we're still trying to figure out what the name is, we're going to be meeting on the 23rd, waiting for an agenda to be set, so, I know, can't speak for Peter, but I think we're happy with the last meeting, so I'm sort of looking forward to the new meeting. In that regard, House Bill 485 regarding air emissions-
Perfect.
...which caused this problem as a result of unregulated contaminants being propelled into the atmosphere by San Diego Bay, and that passed the House on a voice vote. It now goes to the House Finance Committee. That is scheduled for Wednesday, the 24th of January at 3:00 p.m. If anybody wants to outreach to the House Finance Committee, Neil Kirk is the chair. He's a representative from where? If you go to newhampshire.gov and type in Neil Kirk's name, you can find his email address listed right there. And then the Drinking Water Commission will be meeting next Thursday, and I'm hopeful that I'll have something to report back to this community on the 25th.
Excellent.
Something positive for the community on the 25th. So, Peter, did you have anything else, or?
No.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm glad, I had down Bill, House Bill 485 as well, so I'm glad you mentioned that. Just a couple of things I did want to notice, note about the House bill. It not only allows New Hampshire DES to monitor and analyze air emissions, which it does not have the ability to do now, it also helps New Hampshire DES to set groundwater standards based upon any future research. So although it's 70 pats per trillion, it allows New Hampshire DES to change that, but it has to base it upon any research that they may utilize. It also establishes two new positions, a toxicologist, which the state does not have, which will now, and also a human health risk assessor, which is what's needed because you have all these blood work and you have all the research, but therefore, what do you do with it? So, included in that bill is the air emissions, the standards, as well as those two positions. So I'm glad it passed, hopefully it will pass the Senate.
And to let you know, I spoke very briefly with Senator Daniels, and this is on his radar.
Right, so, perfect. Yes?
I just, I just wanted to say, add to that, it's a very complex bill. I'm sure they added everything but the kitchen sink in there. But one of the other things that Clark from DES was telling me is that they currently don't have the ability to enforce any groundwater standards, or for air emissions or groundwater standards, so this allows them to enforce it, and that is, to him, the most important part.
Nice, okay. Okay, next, Highway Garage Project update. Annie?
Yes. The committee met yesterday morning, and there were several points of discussion, most notably, the siding of the building, which had thought, we thought, had been settled. But it turned out that it ran the price up so that it would be out of budget because of a slope that doesn't look very severe, but turns out that retaining wall would be actually quite expensive. And we spoke of moving it back a little bit, or forward and tipping it another way, and either of which would probably work and be within our budget. We were also discussing the water runoff issues, and it is within an aquifer, just barely, and discussing that, and we touched on, we didn't speak of materials this time, we were, and, let's see, we spoke of a little bit about the color, so now we're getting, we're getting to the more interesting parts of it, as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, and the company that we're dealing with is really very multi-talented. They have an architect on their staff, they have, you know, an accountant, someone who gets bids in, they really are, it seems to me, anyway, a very reputable and well-resourced company.
Paul, did you have something?
Yeah, hot off the press, I just got a call from the Bond Bank, early this morning, late morning.
The Bond Bank?
The Bond Bank. They had their bond sale.
I know, I feel your pain, go ahead.
They had their sale, and our, they came in at a 20-year bond, 2.86% interest-
Nice.
For our Highway Garage. So I'll be getting official paperwork that the council will have to sign off on that, but-
And it's all 20 years, so it doesn't start at 2.87.
Congratulations, both of you. That's awesome.
It's not us.
But thanks.
Timing is everything.
Timing is everything.
You can say you're welcome.
I'll take it. So, paperwork will be coming forward, but just wanted, on that, so-
A lot of people don't realize that Paul has Janet Yellen on speed dial, so, you know, it's, it's an unknown secret.
Very good, thank you. Okay, comments from the press or public? Anyone want to speak to any of the topics or anything else? Nope, seeing none. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements. We have a list of people who are getting recognized for various years. We have one which we're going to wait to the very end, but I just do want to note the other people who are going to be receiving recognition. Public Works Highway, Louis LaPointe, for 20 years, he's going to receive a plaque. Wayne Lombard, 20-year plaque. Public Work Wastewater, David Blaine, 30-year clock. And last but not least, God bless her, 45-years, Becky Sullivan, and I'd like Becky to come up to receive, she was hired on September 4th, 1972, when she was 10-years-old. Becky, why don't you come on up? And Jim? And Jim Taylor's going to say a few words before I give you this generous gift card, which is really cool.
Becky's going to share that with all of us, so it's not a problem. So I'd like to give you a little background. Becky grew up in Merrimack and graduated from Merrimack High School. She, before she graduated, she took a part-time job at the recently opened wastewater treatment facility, and then graduating in September of '72, accepted a full-time position as secretary. So a few years went by, and she was asked to cover, on a temporary basis, at the Public Works Office, which I think lasted 25 years, maybe? So it was just a short-term stint. But luckily, we were able to bring her back down to the treatment plant, I think in 2006, where her talents have been very much appreciated. She handles a very difficult payroll, helps the pre-treatment program with Sarita, and who's here, the chair we're on, and also accounts payable, receivables, sewer billing, you know, commercial, industrial. She can answer questions for the general public and residents about compost pickup. So she's certainly made my job a lot easier, and, you know, personally, I really want to say thank you very much for all your years of service. One last thing, is she was recognized as Employee of the Year for Public Works two years ago, so, thank you very much, Becky.
First of all, I just want to say a few words, but I want to give this to you as a token of our appreciation, and don't share it with anyone else. This is all for you, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You do want to say a few words? Go ahead. Oh, you don't?
She does not want to say. Please do.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
I'll shake your hand a second time. Congratulations. God bless you. Okay, there are no appointments. We do have a public hearing. It's related to provisions of the chapter of the Merrimack Town Code that we have been reviewed previously to this. I'm going to do, again, one at a time. The first is Chapter 74, I'm sorry, 34. Again, it's public hearing, this part for the library. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:15, I'm sorry, 7:12, not 7:15. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment regarding this chapter? I'm seeing none. I'll close it at 7:13. And does anyone in the town council want to make any comment?
Madam Chair, move Chapter 34 to the consent agenda.
Motion moved to the consent agenda by Bill Boyd, second by-
Second.
Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, none, okay, any opposed, none. 7:00. Okay, Chapter 66, miscellaneous duties of town council. Again, I will open the town council, it's still 7:13. I'm sorry, open the public hearing. You know, it's just, you know, it's open. Any of you want is open? Any of interest? I see no one of interest, okay. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:14. Council?
Madam Chair, move Chapter 66 to the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Thornton. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, none. 7:00. Okay, Chapter 92, amusement devices. I'm going to open the public hearing, it's still 7:14. Yeah, well, after we do the hearing, we'll do it. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:15.
Madam Chair, I actually have questions.
Wait a minute, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
There is something they want to say.
We did, 192, as last time, the council had a couple of changes.
92?
92, I said 1, I'm sorry, 92, we did have a couple of changes. 92-9, location restrictions, we put that language back in, as requested by the council. We added another segment, 92-10, which talks about the, and that's on page three, which talks about the age of a person to be able to operate one of those-
Okay, that was that.
-games of chance.
That's right, we separated.
We separated those out, and then, of course, the remaining items in 92, all changed by one number throughout.
Because of that?
Because of adding a 92-10, which is the person's age. And this was vetted by our legal counsel, and that's what they suggested for the language in 92-10.
Excellent.
The legal counsel's not going to like me, 92-10. Where in the article do we define amusement games of chance?
Because it does say as defined.
We talk about it underneath the 92-1 definitions.
Right, but again-
Mechanical grab machines in all games.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Pinball machines, skill ball machines, mechanical grab machines in all games, operations and transactions similar thereto, under whatever name they may be designated. I'm having a hard time talking tonight.
We haven't defined these games, these games as games of chance. That's, that's my, that's my sticking point.
What do people think? Finley?
I don't know, a game of chance is something I'm going in to try and get lucky and score something where, I guess, I guess a pinball machine-
See, pinball's skill.
But I don't see it as a game of chance.
Exactly.
Like Keno, I think, it's not a game of chance.
That's what I think. That's exactly, that's correct, I agree.
I would call them amusement devices, as opposed to game of chance, but that's-
So you're suggesting that we change amusement game of chance to amusement devices, which is literally what it's copied here for?
I would, that's what I would suggest.
How does everyone feel about that?
Yeah. So 16-year-olds can't play a pinball machine? Is that what we're saying? Or unless you're 16, you can't play, a 15-year-old can't play a pinball machine?
Which is why I say, whatever the state law says, that's what we do. I really don't care where they are, what they do, for me. And I know that this has been gone, went over 20 years ago, or whatever, in the first place, but it's, um-
Have we ever had a problem with it before?
No, I don't, I don't, no, I don't know that we have. Eileen might know.
I do not. What I was going to say is, would it be okay if we, since we haven't had a chance to address Bill's issue, and are trying to do it on the fly here-
Right.
-that you allow us to make the changes, have the legal counsel vet it again, and then bring it to you, either under consent, or if you're uncomfortable with that, under old business?
I think we just, I would suggest moving it to the, to the next public hearing, to another public hearing. Can we do that, or do we have to restart?
I don't think you need to do either of those things, because the changes aren't substantive.
It's descriptive.
It's descriptive, it's adding a description, it's not changing the, the-
Intent.
Content or the intent of the ordinance.
Whatever.
Does everyone understand what she's saying? Okay.
I haven't found where it says chance.
That's, that's Bill's point.
Yeah, right, I didn't think so. May I say something?
Please do.
It seems to me that we're too, I'm sure other towns are too, too precise about our definitions here, when all they are are the same darn things, you put some money in and you play a game, whether they're chance or skill. I guess I don't see any reason why my 14-year-old grandson, why I would object to him playing any of them, really, as long as there wasn't money involved.
But to allude to Councilor Thornton's point, games of chance are Keno. Last I checked, you've got a pay-
Well, but gambling devices are prohibited, period, 92-3.
I understand that, but again, I'm just saying-
Yeah, that, that word-
I just think, I really think it needs to be consistent.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Peter.
You know, in light of what you, the topic of Keno is coming up to the council, maybe we should table Chapter 92, because that could require further changes in this chapter, so maybe we should sit tight on this one and come back to it, because you know we're going to be visiting it, and it's already out there, so.
We do have time, it's not a bad point.
I agree with Pete.
Yeah, so why don't we do that, if it's consensus of the group, we're going to wait? And should we just get the keynote, well, it's still, why don't we get the attorney advice in terms of the light of, in terms of Keno as well? Get some advice. Go ahead, Finley, you want to say something?
Actually, no, no, I don't have to, but I will. I was just going to say that that meeting on Keno is just informational, is it not?
Yeah, that's correct.
It's not like somebody, I don't think anybody's bringing forward a proposal to have Keno in town.
That is correct.
So, I don't care either way.
Your point's well taken. Go ahead.
I don't believe a motion to table is debatable.
It wasn't seconded either.
Yeah, oh, okay.
But, excuse me.
Yes, Paul?
The whole Keno thing would have, if you're going to do that with the Keno, in light of Keno, we'd have to wait until April 11th, because that's when it's going to get voted on.
And it's purely informational, is what Finley was talking about. There's really no proposal there.
Right, that's what I thought.
Okay, why don't, let's make a decision.
And one other point?
Okay.
Just under Section 92-11.2, after chief, we took out the words his on the first line. We took out, where chief, where we went from chief of police to police chief, we redacted his. On the second to last line down below, can we insert the word their, so that it reads the police chief or their designee, as opposed to the police chief or designee?
We're just trying to be consistent. Through the chapters, other code.
That's the way it's been presented?
Okay, that's fine.
I would vote for consistency then.
Right, that's why we took out his.
That's why we took out his, is to be consistent with the other ones.
Who's the thing making noise? Okay, so our choice is to come back for another public hearing, correct?
Correct.
After? I'm trying to clarify the choices we have.
If you plan on changing it substantively to include the whole Keno matter-
Forget that.
Then, then-
We're not.
You do need one, but if you don't, if you're not changing it, and there's no real substance to your, if there's no real substance to the change, except for wording of definition or something like that, you do not need a public hearing. But I would suggest to you, first, I'm not sure about the rules, but Peter has a motion on the table, and then, secondly, that you consider whether or not you want to put it on the consent agenda, or you want to put it under old business, because under old business, you know, it's just-
If we do it old business-
Then you can still discuss it.
Still discuss it, but then, of course, to a public hearing after that. It would not.
Would not.
Yes, shaking your head, Tom, what?
There's no reason it can't go on the consent agenda, because we can always take it off the consent agenda if we want to discuss it, and we've been taking each one of them individually as we go anyway, because of the requirements that we touch each one of them individually, so I think the argument about old business is mute, just put it on a consent agenda and we'll deal with it.
Did you have a point, Peter? Do you want to say?
Yeah, I just, when, do we know when, how far out we're going to be discussing Keno?
Next, next meeting.
Next Keno is your, your presentation, informational presentation. A final vote, if it goes in front, the school board, if the school board wants to, or you want, are you going to put it on the ballot? So it won't be until after the ballot vote that you'd be discussing, which is eight weeks, give or take?
All right, I would draw my motion.
These are, this could easily be changed in eight weeks. I mean, there's nothing saying we have to do all this once a year, or something like that, so.
So do you want to make a motion to do consent agenda? In the meantime, we'll get clarification regarding the definition?
I'd rather move it to old business, because you're going to put it on a consent agenda, I'm probably going to pull it off consent agenda anyway, so.
Go ahead.
So I would, I would move, I would move Chapter 92 be placed on the agenda for January 25th, for under old business, for further review.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
I'll second.
Who was quicker, Tom Thornton? Call those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7:00. Okay, so we're going to put it under old business. Six, one, have Jasmine on it.
Absolutely.
Okay, Chapter 145, peddling and soliciting. And Peter, you had some questions about that, and so Paul has some answers for you.
I went back, and I don't know if you had a chance, everybody had a chance to read the memo that was in the packet. Legal counsel has come back and said that, in their legal opinion, they feel that it should be rescinded due to courts in other states have ruled that requiring impairment places an unconstitutional burden on speech based on its content. And because we also have Chapter 180, which talks about itinerant vendors, that we could, it will be covered in that chapter, as, as part of what we were trying to do in 145, so they're recommending to rescind it. And if there is a nuisance, we do have the chief of police here, and if there is a nuisance and there is a complaint, the Police Department can always go and enforce, enforce the laws around people being in the road, and nuisances and things of that sort. So there is that as well.
So our attorney is saying just to knock out the entire thing?
Rescind the whole ordinance.
Yes, Peter?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, and based upon legal counsel's recommendation, that we rescind Chapter 145, peddling and soliciting.
Motion made.
Do we not have to put this to a public hearing first, before, because technically the rescinding is actually redacting all the language, would therefore be considered an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so we would have to put this to, this is public hearing.
You haven't opened it up yet, is what I'm-
Well, let's do that. Let's open the public hearing at 7:27, and the crowd, that is, ah, if you need to say something, you've got to come up. Say your name and identify yourself.
Yvette Cowser, I'm the library director. I guess this is a question about this. The library has a policy for no solicitation in the library, which I would have a question of if we were allowed- of if we were allowed to continue to have that or not.
I would think that's a policy.
That's a policy for the library and as long as you, as long as you don't allow one person to bring a Girl Scout form in there or one person to come in and solicitate, solicit, if that's what you have, you can continue to do that.
Okay.
But you can't pick and choose. It's all or none.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other testimony? None, no care. I'll close the public hearing at 7:28. Okay, now...
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we rescind chapter 145.
Seconded.
Motion made by Pete Albert, second by Bill Boyd. Any further discussion about this? Saying none. All those in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so six one zero, and a negative is Tom Keneek. Chapter 180, temporary sales locations and vendors.
Point of order.
Yeah.
Where does this go now?
Where does what go?
One eight, 145. Does it go back for a public hearing? Does it go to the consent agenda to accept the changes?
You would have to move it forward to consent agenda for final vote. It's just like any other ordinance. You're rescinding it, it still needs a vote.
So we need to move that, thank you.
Since we did it at the public hearing, or we're okay to go forward?
Yes.
So we need to move this to the consent agenda now.
So moved.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by...
I'll second.
Tom Thornton. All those in favor moving this rescinded 145 to the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Six one zero, Tom Keneek in opposition. Okay, thank you. Again, chapter 180, temporary sales locations and vendors. I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:30. Any public testimony? Saying none. I'm going to close it at 7:31.
Madam Chair, move chapter 180 to the consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by...
Second.
Peter Albert.
Very quickly, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
I want to thank Kristen Wardner for all the work she did on this. And then obviously she deals with it, so she's intimate in the details, so I do want to publicly thank her for working on this.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? None. Seven zero zero. Okay, legislative updates from state reps, saying none. Town managers report, Eileen.
Okay, thank you. The planning board will have an initial public hearing for the site plan of the mixed-use development called Merrimack Park Place near the Merrimack, at the base of the Merrimack Premium Outlets on January 16th. The site plan calls for 372,800 square feet of development, including retail, hotels slash event center, restaurant, restaurant, office, multi-family residential uses in accordance with the mixed-use development conditional use permit approved by the planning board one year ago on January 17th, 2007, 17. The initial public hearing for the site plan for the multi-developed family development on Executive Park Drive, which is the one beyond the Wood Springs Extended Stay Hotel, the board has heard presentations and testimony for about two hours and has continued the application to February 6th, when the applicant is expected to present revised plans and information to address the board and the residents' concerns. The Highway Division of the Public Works has been busy opening up as many of our 5,000 catch basins as possible in anticipation of tomorrow's rains. If you find that a catch basin is plugged with snow or ice and is causing flooding, please contact the Highway Division at 423-8551 or Public Works at 424-5137. Thank you.
That's it. Okay, consent agenda. This is a consideration of changes to chapters, the Merrimack Town Code, Friday readings. Town council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to chapter 81, water lines of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to chapter article, Roman number five.
Motion for approval.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Finley Rothaus. Any further discussion? There is none anyway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Seven zero zero. We're getting along. We're going to get this town code done. That's a major. Old business, none. New business. Consideration of changes to chapters of Merrimack Town Code, first reading, chapter A 198. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Basically, the changes in chapter 198, there was no substance changes. There were some formatting changes and we, you know, you'll see that by taking out the word and and putting that sign, you know, the and sign, the and sign, taking out the word of and putting in dashes to make this go along with other portions. There's been a couple of reorganizations, like in community development on page 10 and 12, we removed the GIS division because we do not have a GIS division. However, all those duties got moved into, added the responsibilities into planning and zoning administrator because that's what he does. Added the word engineering to the public works department because it's administrative and engineering. We have an engineer. That's what she does. And then added one duty as underneath that area is for CIP. She'll be handling the CIP for the division, capital improvement plan. And then we rearranged on page 17 and 18, which is the fire department, we rearranged the duties to align with who's actually doing the job. So even though we might have taken something out, it's still in the code. We just moved it down to another division or another, who's really doing the responsibilities. And then, of course, the library had some changes as well. And basically what those changes were, they aligned with the current job titles and duties in the code. So there was nothing added to 198. It was mostly, like I said, formatting and rearranging items so that the duties were more closely aligned to the people who are doing them.
And all of these changes have been vetted through all of the directors?
Yes.
Okay, of all the departments?
All the departments gave their recommendations in. We got them. Becky, myself, Sharon.
They saw the final.
Brought them together, brought them to Eileen, and now brought them to the council.
Okay. Discussion, Peter and then Bill.
Regarding the police department, I know that we've discussed for the upcoming budget, the recreation of the deputy chief position and the elimination of the administrative services lieutenant. So we would leave those in till...
Until it was actually voted on.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
And it would actually be, until it's voted on by the town, really?
April 10th.
April.
April 10th, right.
Well, that's the budget. But just the budget.
Right, I just want to clarify to make sure that people know it's April. It's not when we're done with the budget, it's when it's approved by the town with it's changing.
I just, I just think Tom's trying to say that the townspeople vote on the bottom line. You decide whether or not you want to hire them regardless of what the budget is.
Okay. Go ahead.
Which goes to one of my points. If we want to make the change to this adjustment, whether it's budgeted or paid for or not, they don't have to hire the person if the budget doesn't pass. But this is the structure that we as a council want to approve. If we wait until after we've gotten a budget approval, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, I think, because we're asking for money for something that doesn't technically exist on paper. So I think we really ought to get this administrative code the way we expect or want it to be and then move forward with funding it.
There's no disadvantage to doing that? Okay. There's no, it doesn't, because it's basically an organizational check. So you're predicting or what you want it to be?
This is what we want the town to be.
What you want it to be. Gotcha.
And that's your decision because, as you know, the townspeople vote on the bottom line of the budget?
Which is the money.
And if you choose to fund this and eliminate something else, then that's your choice.
So I suggest we do that then. If there's no reason...Peter, does that make sense? You're the one who brought it up, so.
Yeah, absolutely. No problem. I just raised the question, are we going to revisit it again and so forth?
If we can do it now, go ahead.
I was just going to say that we'll work with the chief of police to get that language so that it aligns with what her intent is.
And that would be present for the public hearing?
Correct.
Yes.
Is that okay? Okay. Bill?
I have a lot of notes on this.
Oh, and you want to as well, Jackie? Did you want to make a comment about, okay?
About what?
The police.
The police?
No.
Okay, so let's do Bill then, Jackie.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Bill?
So when Chief Roy and Eileen...
Microphone.
Thank you. Well, that's a first. I'm sorry, Justin, I'm slacking. I apologize. Are we also going to identify, because I know that Chief Roy talked about having a special investigations unit, is that going to be a unit under the Division of Criminal Investigations or is that going to be its own division? I think that should be a part of the conversation.
Okay, but I can't imagine that it's just going to be a different division.
Okay, and then the other thing would be the, we put, do we put the prosecutor under the criminal investigation division or is that usually?
No.
Okay. Okay. Page three of 26, section B.
Which one?
Article.
Article, I'm sorry, article four, section B. Thank you, Councilor Keneek, I appreciate that. The section reads, "Department heads may submit for approval by the manager and the town council recommended amendments to the administrative code while they either submit amendments or they recommend amendments." It needs to be either or. I just, I find that redundant. May submit recommended amendments. I just...
Paul?
I'm okay with it.
Department heads do not submit the changes to, directly to, the town council. Everything comes to the town manager. The town manager is the one who submits any changes to A 198 to the town council. So I think what that maybe doesn't read right, it's department heads may submit for approval by the town manager to the town manager and then the town manager to the town council.
To recommend?
To recommend.
To the town, or not to the town council.
If you could rewrite that.
Yeah, okay.
That would be however you want to do it.
Revisit.
Okay. Article four, section D, it reads, "Department heads shall be responsible for insuring." They don't insure, they insure, again? On page five of 26, article seven, section A, is it human resources coordinator? I thought we changed that title. No, that's correct. Okay, thank you. Page seven, section C, line, line one, it reads, "Plan, budget, report, and control." Should there be a comma between budget and report?
Yeah.
Okay, and put a period, if you could put a period on the end of that sentence, please. Page eight of 26, article eight, section A, line five, it reads, "Make regular and frequent checks of the town to assure all taxable property." Again, should that not be insure, not assure?
No, assure is to make...
I think it's insure.
Ensure versus assure.
It was assure.
I thought, I thought it was assure, too. I think it'd go either way.
You don't have a dictionary.
Assure, I would say assure. I'd be with you.
Bless you.
Ah!
Want me to hit him? Just give me the name.
I...
I will ensure that you will.
I would submit that based upon the definition of insure, making certain that something shall occur or be the case, as for example, the client must ensure that accurate records be kept.
And assure is what?
I'll pull that up next.
Assure means...
There, you go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
To declare earnestly to, inform or tell positively, to state with confidence.
Either one.
To cause or no-sharingly.
I disagree, I disagree because you, you are not assuring the taxpayers. You are ensuring that the properties are accurately reported.
Fine.
Okay.
May that be the worst debate we have tonight. Next.
Page 10.
Bill feels good. He won that one.
Page 10.
I think he should have won the comment as well, but I didn't want to fight over the comments.
Go ahead.
Page 10, it reads up top, it says, "The town clerk/tax collector shall perform the following functions," and then there are eight functions. And then there's a second line that says, "Perform all tax collection responsibilities as vested in tax collectors." Is it possible to add a language that reads, "The town clerk/tax collector shall also perform all tax collection responsibilities as vested?" That way the sentence is more clear, clearer than what it is. I just felt it was awkward the way it was presented.
I kind of like it the way it is.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I think because it's under, because it's a heading, that that would be appropriate because it's not one of the numbered items under number one. I think that it's just, it's another category with, that gives a list of the things that it's, that this line is describing.
So you're agreeing that we should say also includes?
No.
No. Leave it as is.
Jeez, I hate it when I agree with Bill.
So what you're suggesting, Bill, is that just to further explain also includes?
Correct.
I don't think it harms anything.
These are just tax collection efforts, though. And if you split that job, it's...
We are splitting the job because the town clerk/tax collector is the first part and the second part is tax collector.
But the first part has nothing to do with tax collecting.
Well, but that's the person's job title.
Yeah, that's the title.
Well, then if that's the title, then it should be consistent with that second section.
I don't think so. I think it's just the tax collector's responsibilities.
Then you should enunciate tax collector in that, have to write that little paragraph there, I think.
Does it make...
She did go.
I did roll my eyes now.
I might roll them with you. Okay, how, yes, Jackie?
Yes, I'd like to just, I'd just say that I think that after all the effort that's gone into all these things, that if it makes sense, leave it.
I like that.
With all due respect.
No, I was not.
Does anybody have a real hat for leaving it? Yeah? Okay. Next, Bill?
Moving on. Under article nine for fire and rescue.
Nine.
Page?
I'm sorry, page 17 to 26.
Thank you.
You won. It reads, the second paragraph begins to read, "The fire and rescue department shall consist of the following divisions," and then you had six bullet points where the word division was removed. But then you go down to, you go down to paragraph A and B and C and D, we add division back in. And I'm just, is the redaction of those six bullet points because the first sentence reads, "Consist of the following divisions"?
Yes.
That is a consistency issue.
That is a consistency issue. If you look at the next one, police. They're just listed as items. If you look at page twenty-three to twenty-six, it's administrative and support, communications, criminal investigation, and patrol. We just tried to do a formatting to make the document the same, so we took out divisions up top where it said administrative and support division, because if you read it, it says, "The fire and rescue department shall consist of the following divisions." You don't need to say division after each one of them.
Actually, right.
It reads as follows, which means.
When you go into the individual division.
You gotta, you gotta actually, we're listing them as individual afterwards.
I understand.
Page eighteen, section B, line number three. Plan and carry out all needed training programs practical in classroom two. Ensure, not assure.
He's right there.
You missed the carryout.
Pete, keep that definition on your phone.
Next.
Page nineteen, section C. Paragraph six, this may be a question for the chief. It reads, "Provide emergency preparedness, planning, pandemic, period." Then it fragments, "Coordination of the Merrimack Local Emergency Planning Committee." And my two comments were, one, the sentence was fragmented, but two, but do we have such a committee? Because this is the first time that I'm actually seeing this language. Or hearing of this.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Eileen.
The emergency management director is the fire chief, so he would probably be the one that would answer that. Is that right? Is that correct?
But we do have a committee.
And it's called the Merrimack Local Emergency Planning Committee?
When he, when he enacts the emergency management division, the committee comes together, which, there is actually, go ahead, chief, then.
Good. The town of Merrimack has a local emergency planning committee, which is made up of anybody that stores hazardous materials in reportable quantities throughout the town. We meet on a quarterly basis to review the hazmat and what they're doing to protect the community from any hazards that they have, and we're also a part of the regional local emergency planning committee out of Nashua that takes care of our town and all our surrounding towns, so we can correlate efforts to ensure that what other towns are, insure, insure, assure. We are to ensure that any other communities that may have any tractor trailers that come in that bring reportable quantities of hazardous materials through our town to their town, we're all on the same page, and if there's an emergency, we plan for that. That's why it's a local emergency planning committee and regional based.
Good to know.
Thank you.
I do agree with Bill, and the verb should be the same. You provide emergency preparedness, you coordinate the Merrimack local emergency.
Page, I'm sorry. Page nineteen, section D, number two. Prepare, maintain all division records, comma, reports and documentation as required. Page twenty, still section D, line number six. It reads, "Plan and carry out," and this is probably for Chief Courier, I probably should have had you state what, I apologize. Plan and carry out a regular inspection program for place of assembly permits. But then the community, I, I would like to be educated, what's a place of assembly permit?
Right now, we have a place of assembly permit, sits in the back right there. It's to have a certain number of people that can sit in this room.
It limits the amount of people.
So it's an occupancy certificate?
No, it's a place of assembly, you can assemble here.
Only up to a certain capacity.
To a certain capacity.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Eileen.
Isn't carry out, take out, like, take out food?
Yes, it does.
And carry should be two words.
Six.
Page, section E, still on page twenty, section E, line eight.
I'm gonna have to roll my eyes at you.
Maintain, upgrade, and train all users. Page twenty-one. Section F. Paragraph one.
Sure.
H.
Go ahead.
Yes, I am sure. Investigate, comma.
Where are we?
What number?
Page, page twenty-one, section F.
H, okay.
Page twenty-two. Paragraph two. Section I. What is the regional coordinating committee?
Mike?
Participating in regional coordinating committees for health and emergency management plans.
The town of Merrimack and all the local emergency planning committees are part of the health region, which is part of the health board out of Nashua. What Nashua has done is they have established a region for health, so any pandemics, any type of exposures, any type of.
Public health problems.
You know, viruses or bacteria that may come out through the community are, that information is transferred through all the communities, so we all get it. So it's a regional health committee.
Okay.
That goes through there. We meet on that, usually quarterly also, but because of some of the flu pandemics that are coming around, they've been meeting rather on a more frequent occasion.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Jackie, if you want to ask a question, go right ahead. Why are they chief? Go right ahead. Go ahead.
Are you the health officer?
No, I'm not. What happens? Pardon? That's a big statement on health office. What has that, how that was written, and why there was a lot of changes in that paragraph two that you're looking at, is because of twofold, and we did a lot, did a lot of investigations into the health officer in town, and the way we run our department and how this is worded, I don't need to be the health officer, okay? Because it says in here that I have ultimate authority over health, dealing with the town council, which is the health council and the state. In the past, prior to the health division coming to the fire department, there was some issues about the health officer telling his boss what he can and can't do with health, and that's why it's written in this line a long time ago, and we don't want to run across that again. What I did prior to writing this was I went through and did an evaluation of the towns, being Merrimack, Hudson, London Dairy, Dover, Bedford, there's a couple other ones that have a building in health under the fire chief, and those towns have, or are in the process of changing and making the chief the health officer because of that reason. I don't think the chief needs another hat to be a health officer. I think he needs to manage the health department, and this here provides that management capability for the chief, and puts the health officer's responsibility on the health officer where it belongs. That's my statement.
Makes sense.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Bill, anymore?
Page twenty-three, Article twelve, police department. Section A. Numbers five and six. It says, "The administrative services and supportive decision will oversee the preparation, presentation, department cases in the court, oversee the preparation and presentation of all the cases for the grand jury of the Superior Court." Do we need to, and this is just a question, I'm not saying I want to change it, do we need to include the prosecutor somewhere in here to reflect that we actually have a role?
Do we need the chief, or?
Can you just clarify that question for me? I was trying to read along with it.
That's, that's okay. Page twenty-three. Article twelve, section A, number five and number six. The division oversees the preparation, presentation at the district court and then grand jury and superior court. So my question is, do we need to reflect the fact that it's the prosecutor that does those cases, and that is oversight over the prosecutor, or am I flogging a dead horse?
We absolutely could add that it's the prosecutor's responsibility. It's just that that division oversees, the captain oversees it ultimately.
Okay. Page twenty-five. Article thirteen. Section four. It reads, "Through membership in the GMILCS consortium." Is it possible that we can spell that out so that we know what GMILCS? You don't have to come up with that, I just.
Well, it's.
Oh, okay.
It's library, so.
Okay.
I, okay. So you are asking if we could spell out GMILCS?
Correct.
That's not a simple question, because on the board level, in the consortium, we have that same argument, because it originally stood for, and I apologize, I apologize for this, because we've gone around in my consortium, and it's frustrating.
Hold on, go ahead.
Is it possible to just call it a consortium, but just describe what kind of consortium it is?
Yes, that would be a lot easier, because it used to be Greater, Greater Manchester, and as we widen our reach geographically, a town like Nesmith is a, they may be offended that they're considered a Manchester suburb. I'm sorry, Windham. Nesmith Library in Windham. So that's why we have arguments at our table and say.
Could you say a consortium which represents?
Yes, several towns, yes. Absolutely.
Excellent, so you'll.
I was just calling it a regional consortium.
Yes.
If your membership is a regional consortium.
Regional.
A regional.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Perfect.
I'm done.
Nope.
Now, Jackie, you had some things.
It's very, very minor stuff, but I was a little confused if this is, is this going to be the final, like, this page is going to look like that in the booklet?
Look like what?
Yes, like this is.
Yes.
Yeah, then there were headings for general government, and we started by saying that the town manager.
What page are you on, Jackie, please?
Pardon me?
What page are you on?
What page?
Page one.
I'm looking, I'm looking. Let's see, under one, A 198, the administrative code, page one of twenty-six.
Yeah.
It has these. Yeah, it has like department slash division, and then department slash division ad.
Page one.
Yes, she is.
Is that right here?
Yeah, 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 and it has town manager. And then again, with, in charge of general government divisions, and then it has town manager again, in charge of community services division, then it goes to finance director assistant slash assistant town manager, assistant town manager. That's not printed in an understandable way.
You mean the way it's visually presented?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Okay, I, I agree with you, when you, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was very confusing.
It could be a lot cleaner.
Yeah, yeah, but then it has community development divisions under the, at least the way I'm reading it. I don't think this was the intent, under the community development director. Well, the town manager is in charge of the community development director.
Of the director, yeah.
Of the director, but the community development director is in charge of community development.
Yeah.
Just like the finance director is in charge of the finance department.
Bold print in that, in that particular formatting, I don't think. Because the town manager is the one that should be over there, like she is here. General government, community services division, and then the finance director is in charge of the finance department, then it should be town manager.
No.
No.
I disagree.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, well, I mean, because the community development director is responsible for the community development division. He reports to the town manager.
Just like the next.
That's what I mean.
Just like the next page.
Oh, okay.
That's what I mean.
You have a public works director.
Not directly responsible for the division.
No, that, that is correct, but it's in the same kind of bold print, in the same line, as.
So it's the formatting you don't like?
Yeah.
The visual presentation.
Yeah, because I find it confusing. It isn't that I want it prettied up particularly.
No, but for clarity.
Yes.
Is it okay if we just work with Jackie and, no, so that we fully understand, like, at a table, what it is that you like?
Yeah, it should be in different print or something to set it apart. Yeah, yeah.
You want to come in and we'll just?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah. And then again, on the other, on the other page, it's the public works director.
A similar issue.
Exactly, they're the same.
Okay.
Good. Yes, I will.
Perfect. Anything else?
No.
Okay. So we have multi, John, please, go ahead.
Thank you.
No, I was, I was curious, because Paul has two titles, the finance director and the assistant town manager division, town manager, but I don't believe that we ever intended for that to be the, the title for one individual. You have two titles, whereas the town clerk tax collector is sort of coded to have that title for that one individual. So when the finance department is here, the finance director is the person responsible, not the assistant town manager. And throughout here, where they always put those two titles together, I'm not sure that that's the intent of the way we're structured, and I thought that they probably should be separated. They don't have to be, the fact that you carry both titles doesn't mean that functioning as finance director, you're also functioning as the assistant town manager in directing that department.
Yeah. I, I just believe that that's his, his title, so.
Well, it is his title, but that's not the title of the person who's responsible for the finance department. The finance director is responsible for the finance department.
There is no finance director, there's a finance director slash town assistant town manager, in my opinion.
I didn't think we, I didn't think we did that, but I thought we just gave him two titles. But if, if you want to say that the town will always have a finance director slash assistant town manager, then we can go forward that way. I just, I didn't believe that was the case.
Okay, doesn't have to be for always, anyway.
Jackie?
Yes, that would be my question, too. I agree with Tom. That would be my, my question. If Paul retired and we hired a new finance director, would that person automatically carry that? No, so I agree with Tom. I think it's a separate, these are separate duties and responsibilities.
I just, I just think that it's, you know, it's, this isn't carved in stone. I don't think Paul's going to retire for another ten years or so, so, you know, it's up, it's up to you, but.
Unless he's the powerball person.
Right. And he's still, if he's the powerball person, he wouldn't have shown up the next day.
Oh, yeah, he would have.
I would have shown up, but I wouldn't be here right now. I'd have carded out early.
Yeah.
Well, that's one more we can scratch off the list, if not Paul. We're going to figure this person out eventually.
So, just out of curiosity, so if you were to be replaced, let's say you did my powerball, and you're gone. We would hire a finance director, but that would not necessarily have the town, assistant town manager. So it really is two different. He functions in two different ways. So in that case, I agree with Tom. But what I'm, but, but it's a title with two different functions.
I'm the town manager in Queen of the Dead, so.
But as he said, that's always pretty case.
Q O D. Okay, so, yeah, I know.
So what do we decide?
We're going to separate.
It's also very clumsy.
Okay, any other? All set? Okay, so based upon all those changes, and you're going to be meeting with Jackie regarding the formatting and visual clarity, are we ready to move this on to?
Madam Chair, move chapter A 198 to a public hearing.
Motion by Bill Boyd, second by Philly Rothaus. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, seven, zero, zero. Okay. Primex Contribution Assurance, Assurance Program. For fiscal year 2020 to 2022, submitted by Finance Director Paul McCauley. For fiscal year 2020 to 2022, submitted by finance director Paul McCauley, he knows it's not finance director, slash assistant town manager. Town council to consider the option of participating in the contribution assurance program for the next three coverage period years for Primex property and liability program and workers' comp actually. So go right ahead, Eileen.
This is something that we've entered into before in, for the year two thousand...
Thirteen.
Thirteen through eighteen. Okay, so we entered into this kind of a program before. And basically, what it is, is that from Primex, there, so there's two different, two different contracts. One is for workers' comp, who's under Primex. One is for property and liability, who's also Primex. So on, on Primex's benefit in both of them, we have now, we are now committing to another three years to be with them. To our benefit, we are, we are allowing ourselves to have a cap on, which is, the cap is a maximum, it's not what the amount will be unless we reach over that. So to give you some idea of what some of, what our caps were and what our actual increases were, in two thousand and thirteen, I'm talking about workers' comp now, in two thousand and thirteen, we had an eight percent cap. The actual, the actual increase was point one percent. In two thousand and fourteen, we also had an eight percent cap. The actual that we were charged was negative eight point six percent. So, and it goes on like that. And if you want me to give you every year, okay. So in two thousand and fif, two thousand and sixteen, we had a ten percent cap and we had a negative seven point seven percent actual. In two thousand and seventeen, we had a ten percent cap and we had an actual of nine point five percent. And in two thousand and eighteen, we had a ten percent cap. Obviously, we don't know what that's gonna be, if you sign the agreement, it'll be seven percent.
So seventeen was a hard year for workers' comp then.
Seventeen and eighteen will be too.
What was two thousand and fifteen?
Two thousand and fifteen was an eight percent cap with a negative eight point six percent actual.
You said that was fourteen. Two years in a row. Oh, it's two years in a row? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so do you want to address that, the workers' comp first?
Sure, you've, you've done that, so go right.
No, but Peter seems to have a question.
Go ahead, Peter.
The years that it jumped up in big numbers, and I know you probably can't, but maybe, were these just a lot of claims or some big, or some big claims on serious injuries or something?
It, it could be both. I'm not privy necessarily to the information about, because of HIPAA and all that kind of thing, about what people's injuries are, but there were, there were workers, quite a few.
Like the fire department had.
Like the fire department had. We talked about when we hired the new firefighters, there were injuries. Some of them, for instance, in one division, there was an individual who was out for almost a year.
Okay.
So, so, and some police officers as well. So it's, it's all, you try and prevent them, as you know, from the preventative law, from the, the pub, what is it called?
Joint loss?
Joint loss committee. Yes. So you try and mitigate those by the joint loss committee, who reviews every claim and determines whether or not it's, it was preventable or not. And if it was not, if it was preventable, how to fix things. And then it also depends on the luck of the draw. It depends on the luck of the draw, or if we don't have sufficient staff, as maybe occurred in the fire department, could have, or, you know, does a person pop their back out because there's not enough people, I, you know, maybe? Because there's not enough people to lift? Or they're tired, or? So we've had quite a few claims that might indicate that our next few years, as we talked about, that we wouldn't see a significant change in workers' comp because they're done actuarially and go, they include past years.
Just a quick follow-up.
Go right ahead.
If we, if we said we don't want to do that, and who would we shop it out to? Is there, there's pretty, there's nobody to shop it out to, right?
There is no one who does, there's no one that does it at all.
There's no, our workers' comp is in a, in a state consortium and we would have to go to a private individual vendor and then we lose some of our rights underneath the being in a pool.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm surprised that no one has stepped up to, like the inter-local trust did with Health Trust, to be, you know, a secondary group. Because I believe the attorney general's office eliminated workers' comp from, from the New Hampshire Municipal Association or whatever they were, because it, it wasn't being, it was, it was supplementing, it was kind of being pooled with property and liability and supplementing other programs.
Thank you.
So do you want to vote on that one first? Because there are...
Might as well, because it's two separate ones, right?
It's, wait a minute, hang on. So one is...
Well, the signature that we need to get seems to be one.
Right.
Although it says here, property and liability program, it doesn't say anything about workers' comp.
And the first one says property and liability. Property and liability.
Because there are two signatures here, two different things that have to be signed.
And they're both property and liability contribution assurance program. Doesn't say anything about workers' comp.
Nope, doesn't.
Yeah, Primex made a mistake in the document, so I guess we'll have to bring it back. Do we have a, do we have a deadline?
They wanted it by February, so we have to table it until the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Well, we can do the cat pot. Or do you want to wait for the whole thing?
I think you should wait, because the result of what you're gonna do is gonna be to allow someone to sign a document, so if you haven't seen it.
Both of them, okay.
Okay.
All right. So because of that, we're going to table it for future.
Move to table.
Seconded to January twenty-fifth.
To January, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Is that, you have sufficient, twenty-fifth is sufficient?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but I didn't know if it was early February or end of February. Okay, motion in made by Tom Koenig, second by Bill Boyd, right?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, seven, zero, zero.
See you, Bob. Have a seat.
Hey, we beat it, we beat it, yes, that we said, you can't get away from us fast enough. Okay, minutes, approve the minutes from the following town council meeting, December twenty-first. Now Jackie, you were not there, so you have to recuse yourself.
Madam Chair, I move the Thursday, December twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen town council meeting minutes with one change.
And that would be?
Page five, line forty-seven. Muscles and barnacles have started growing. Muscles, M U S S E L S, the mollusk, not the...
Not the biceps.
Not the biceps.
Maybe they work out and block out.
Okay, any other changes? Okay, seeing none, motion?
Second.
Okay, Bill, that was a motion, right, sorry.
That's correct, yep.
And Tom Koenig is second. All those in favor with the correction say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One recusing, not recusing, abstaining thing. So it's that six, zero, one, Jackie Flood abstaining. Comments from the press. Comments from the crowd, the public. Comments from the council. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very quickly, it was brought to my attention today that the secretary of the planning board, Alastair Milnes, lost his mother, unfortunately. She had been ill for an extended period, however, the passing was considered to be, was considered to be sudden. So I certainly want to offer up my condolences to Alastair Milnes and, and his family members on the passing of his mother. Thank you.
Thank God bless you. Peter, nothing? Anyone else? Take a motion or adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Bill Boyd, motion, second by Tom Thornton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nobody would dare. Seven, zero, zero.
What a challenge.
Good night.